Our 9:10 a.m. item. Presentation of the Semiannual Employee Service Awards for the County of Lake to recognize years of service. And Ms. Samick will be taking the lead on this. Please come on up.
I think I'm loud enough without it, but we'll try this. Thank you for coming today. We take time out twice a year in September and in March to celebrate the service of our employees. You are most valuable resource that makes all the work happen in the county. We just want to take time to say thank you. We will call each department up and they will honor their employees. Our first department is Admin.
I'll keep it short with everybody here. So first up is Johanna DeLonge for five years, Assistant Clerk to the Board of Supervisors. Appreciate everything she does for us. Second up is Terry Lockston, our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison, five years. And then going on to Animal Control, Animal Care and Control, sorry, Jessica Leishman, Deputy Animal Control Director, five years. And that's it for us.
Next is the Auditor Controller.
She was just outside. There was no room. I saw her go back.
Okay, I'm going to skip her just in case she comes back and let's do Behavioral Health next.
Come up. You know who you are. Holly Austensen. Holly Austensen is a Substance Use Disorder Counselor Senior, and this is her five-year anniversary. Wait, did we get a picture? You're not escaping without a picture. Okay, next we have Linda Bauer, who is a Mental Health Case Manager, and Linda has been working with us for five years. Thank you. Also celebrating five years, we have Ms. Janet Button. Come on up, Janet. She's an accountant. Also are Ms. Lovely Lindsey Mason, who is also an accountant, and both Janet and Lindsey have been here five years. All right, I'm not sure that, I don't think she's present, but I do want to give a shout out to Patricia Messner, who is a Supervising Behavioral Health Clinician, also five years. Thank you, Patricia. And we have a 15-year anniversary as well, although unfortunately, I think he played hooky on us today. I don't see him anywhere, but Mr. Edgar Ontiveros, he runs our Laveuse de la Esperanza down in Clear Lake. Thank you so much.
Janet.
All right, thank you very much. Can you hear me? I would like to announce Renee Littlefair, our Payroll Specialist, for five years of really hard work. TV payroll.
Child Support Services.
I'd like to first announce Tanya Bravo, Child Support Officer, five-year service. Thank you, Tanya. And then I would like to announce Mary Latte, Child Support Assistant, 10-year service. Thank you, Mary. Okay, this is Amy Jensen, Child Support Special Programs Coordinator, 30 years of service. Thank you.
And I'm going to interrupt real quick. If you have to leave, please do so, but I would love to have you all stay so we can all celebrate together. If you could, please.
Next, we have Community Development.
I was standing real close so I could use that time that I would normally be walking up here to talk about my people. We have three five-year awards today. Michael Herringshaw, come on up, Code Enforcement Officer. And I decided to skip the part about how I've known him since he was like a neater grasshopper and just talk about how intelligent he is and how he knows our code, but he also knows our county, and he works with compassion with our community. Simone Hingston, come on up, our Plans Examiner, too. And I could talk about her intelligence and her Swiss pragmatism and her wit, but she just passed a CASP test, which is how we evaluate accessibility, compliance with accessibility laws in our plans. And I got to tell you, when I used to work for the county, you know, long time ago, there were like two CASP-certified people in the county, like regular people. Now we've got two CASP-certified on our staff, so that is a wonderful accomplishment. Thank you. And then Shannon. Shannon says, Community Development Technician. You are really lucky if you have somebody like Shannon on your team because she's no drama, very professional. You ask her to get something and it's like, no big deal. She just does it, even though it's remarkable. And she's one of those people who doesn't bring a lot of flash to herself, but when she's gone, you feel it. So I am very, very privileged to have these people on our team, and our county is lucky. Thank you.
Next, we have District Attorney.
I have Claudia Mendez, our Victim Witness Advocate, for five years. She is amazing. She's bilingual. She connects with people every day, and she's an incredible gift to our office. She's not here right now, but thank you, Claudia. Rich Watson is here, my chief. He's here five years. He worked his way up a little bit, quickly. And I could not do my job without him, is like there every step of the way, so thanks so much. Marcy Barnes is 10 years, Legal Administrative Assistant, Senior. And Marcy is, just works so hard, never, she's unflappable, just never gets stressed out if she does, doesn't show. She's excellent. We wouldn't want to work without you, having you there. Ed Borg, Deputy District Attorney, Senior, 20 years. 20 years, he's up in court. He's so well-needed in there. And Art Growth, Deputy District Attorney, Senior, 25 years. He's in the office charging criminals. He didn't want to come, but he's a little bit shocked. But thank you so much for all my staff. I really appreciate them.
Next up, we have Elections.
I'd like to honor Savannah Fait, Elections Senior Specialist. She's been with the county for five years. So I want to give a personal shout-out to Savannah. She's due in October with her second boy, so we'll miss you during election time, but congratulations on that. I want to also say that I've learned so much from Savannah. She's, I've got to know her and seen her grow, not only on a personal level, but on a professional level. She graduated from Mendo College in 2021 and recently graduated from the California University of Northridge in May of 2024 this year. So I want to applaud her and congratulate her for all her hard work. It's been a pleasure working and seeing you grow. And there's more of Savannah to come.
Health Services.
Well, I'm only going to take one of these, and then I'm going to pass it over to Craig for Environmental Health. So today, we are celebrating Grace Guntivano with 10 years of service.
I am absolutely stoked to introduce these service awards for these folks. First, I have Donna Kloninger, been with us five years, and Priscilla, five years as well. Both of these employees have absolutely outstanding, and we couldn't do any of the work that we do without them. Congratulations on your five years.
I think we already did it. When we were clapping, I think he spoke of Priscilla.
Well, let's, Priscilla? Priscilla, I know I saw you here. Come on up.
Did I, did they miss Priscilla? No.
And Priscilla's also celebrating five years. Thank you.
And next, we have my team. I have two members with five years. Iranti has this amazing sense of humor, sense of organization. She has elevated our benefits game in presentations. Everything she does, she just takes on with gusto, and I couldn't be luckier to have And next, we also have celebrating five years, Frida Hames. She handles a great deal of our recruiting. Again, another person with a wicked sense of humor, a sense of joy, and I am very lucky to work with both of them. Thank you for your service. Next, we have the Library.
She's not here today, but Amy Patton, our Library Technician, is celebrating 25 years, and we're so lucky to have had her for so long at the library.
Next, we have Probation.
First, we have Colton de los Santos. He's five years with the county and he's one year with our office. He's a Deputy Probation Officer and does a great job. Next, we have Michaela Knoll. Michaela is a Supervisor, Deputy Probation Officer, and she is in Supervisor Training this week, so she can't be here, but she's got 10 years with the county. She's a great part of our team.
Public Services.
All right, well, good morning. We have two individuals to recognize on both ends of the spectrum for time. One is not here, and that's Will Kenner. He's a Parks Maintenance Worker Senior, five years. So Will Kenner, he chose to be out in the parks. He did. I invited him, for sure. And then the other end of the spectrum, and he has a picture of his family up there along with his other passion, which is fishing. Bob Allen, 35 years, and I think that's worth a big round of applause. So Bob's wife is here, and I'm not sure if it's to celebrate or to ensure that you continue working. So I'm going to, I'm going to hope that it's the last, well, actually, I hope it's both, but I sure hope you continue. He's a, if you don't know Bob, shame on you. He's a wonderful human being. He knows these, he knows your buildings in and out. He's worked up from 1988 as an extra help, grounds worker, I believe, all the way up as a, now he's Deputy Director for Project and Operations, primarily focusing on facilities and parks. But he's, I've learned more from Bob than anyone else in my time here at the county, so a very, I am grateful, and you all should be as well. So Bob, thank you for your service.
Public Works.
Hi, my name is Glenn March. I'm the new Public Works Director. I've been here three months, and one of the, one of the most special groups who work very hard is our Roads Department, and we have two of the stars of our Roads Department here. Our first person we'd like to congratulate is Daniel Wright. Daniel has been here for 15 years? 20 years? Daniel is one of our Road Supervisors, so he is out there making sure the work gets done, as well as chipping in and making that extra effort to help everyone make sure the roads are in great shape. Our second person is James Stuckert. James is responsible for the Paint and Sign Shop, so if you see all that new striping out there and new signs.
Next, we have the Sheriff's Department.
I feel like there's a quartet coming in.
Good morning, Sheriff Rob Howe. We have quite a few, so I'm going to go through this quickly, then I'll say a few words at the end here. First, we'll start with Demetrius Donaldson, Deputy Sheriff, two. Andres Fernandez Alvarez, Deputy Sheriff, two. Tony Jackson, Deputy Sheriff, two. Jacob Masdeo, Sergeant Corrections. Stone Phillips, Sergeant Corrections. Deputy Sheriff Corrections. Carl Potter couldn't be here today, but I'll give the name either way. Juanvia Munoz, Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And John Wander, Deputy Sheriff, two. These are all of our five-year recipients. I'll move on to one 10-year recipient, that'd be Jeffrey Mora, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant. Final three couldn't be here today. I'm going to go with the names fairly quickly. Aaron Clark, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, 15 years. Dennis Keathley, Deputy Sheriff Sergeant, 20 years. And Jared Bissard, Sergeant Corrections, 25 years. And just a quick thank you to you all. I think we all know the value of our long-term employees. The experience, knowledge you bring is invaluable. I've said this before, I believe it to be true, the county doesn't run without you people, and I know my department doesn't run without these people, so thank you very much for your service. Thank you also to loved ones, family. Eight to five isn't a normal gig for us, so there's a lot of sacrifice made by family and friends to support these, these men and the women in our department, so thank you
Next up, we have Social Services.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Page. Our Director Rachel Dillman Parsons could not be here today, so I am presenting on her behalf. We have quite a list. She did write a little blurb about each person. I don't know, do we have time for that? Okay. First up, we'd like to recognize Jennifer Alfenda for five years of service. Jennifer is an Administrative Analyst for the Director. Her expertise in all things, especially Smart Sheets and policy writing, makes her invaluable to the department. Next up, we have Noel Boosti for five years of service. Noel is our Supervising Analyst at Child Welfare. Her cheery demeanor and can-do attitude make her a delight to work with. Next up, we have Karen Kahn, five years of service. Karen is one of our Office Assistant Supervisors at our Anderson Ranch Office. Karen is Chaos Coordinator Extraordinaire. She makes sure the public receives exceptional customer service from reception. Next up, we have Jeanette Foley for five years of service. Jeanette is one of our Office Assistants at Anderson Ranch. She has excellent phone skills and she excels at customer service. Next up, we have Sean Ford for five years of service. Sean is a Social Worker Three at our Adult Services Office. He is a great sport in addition to being an advocate for the elderly and for disabled adults. Sean can often be seen wearing a kilt to our DSS employee events. Next up, we have Adrian Jest, five years of service. Adrian is one of our Systems Analysts, as well as our LCEA Union President. Adrian is always friendly and approachable. He provides outstanding customer service to DSS staff. Next up, we have Michelle Lambert for five years of service. Michelle is one of our Eligibility Specialists. She joined DSS in reception. She then promoted to a lead position. Helping our customers is her passion, so she then transferred to Eligibility, where she continues to help all of our customers. Next up, we have TJ Nagra for five years of service. TJ is a Staff Services Analyst for Foster Care. He has abundant patience and excellent computer skills. He can learn just about anything he puts his mind to. And finally, five years of service, we have Rebecca Ogawa. Rebecca is a Social Worker Two at Employment Services. She tackles every new assignment with a positive attitude and never hesitates to roll up her sleeves to learn something new. She has helped streamline workflows to help coworkers and customers alike. Moving on to 10 years of service, first up, we have Sarah Keen Pasalo. Sarah is our System Support Analyst at Child Welfare Services. She has extensive knowledge of the computer systems used at Child Welfare. She's always willing to help with data collection, and she is a great asset to CWS. Next up, we have Denise Ochoa for 10 years of service. Denise is a Social Worker Three at Child Welfare. She works very hard and always has a great attitude. She works with families, inputs data, and is also in charge of our parenting classes for our clients. Next up, we have Shira Ruiz for 10 years of service. Shira is a Staff Services Analyst at Adult Services. With experience in both administration and at Adult Services as an analyst, Shira excels in quality assurance reviews and at policy writing. Next up for 10 years, we have Amy Shimansky. Amy is the Deputy Director of our Adult Services Office. She is kind, knowledgeable, and unflappable. Her leadership is admired by her team and her peers alike. Next up, at 10 years of service, we have Nichelle Winchester. Nichelle is one of our Lead Eligibility Specialists. She keeps her team together and working no matter the challenges. Next up, 15 years of service, we have Irma Castro. Irma is a Social Worker Three at Child Welfare. She's in the Emergency Response Unit. Irma is kind and compassionate, and she is always there to support her coworkers. Next up, we have Tracy Keener for 15 years. Tracy is one of our wonderful accountants. She has been around for a long time, long enough to know just about everything there is to know about DSS accounting, and we are extremely grateful to her for her knowledge and guidance throughout the years. Next up, at 15 years, we have Michelle Lepe. Michelle is an Eligibility Supervisor. She keeps her unit on track and current despite our numerous staffing challenges we're seeing at DSS. If you need it, Michelle's on it, and she is quick to help with translation when needed. Next up, for 15 years, we have Sofia Peña. Sofia is an Employment and Training Supervisor for our Welfare to Work Program. She has amazing research skills and catches on quickly to anything new you throw at her. She has the ability to think on her feet and appears relaxed and comfortable in front of an audience. And finally, at 25 years, we have CJ Barker. CJ is a System Support Analyst at DSS. At 25 years, he has even spent more time at DSS than Rachel has. She remembers when she started at DSS, CJ was the expert with tons of experience, the go-to guy after he'd been there three years. Thank you, CJ, for your dedication, immeasurable patience, and loyalty to our agency. And thank you to everybody for your dedication. We could not do this for them.
Special Districts.
We have one person from Special Districts celebrating five years. His name is David McGrath. I don't see him here. I believe he's out working on our electrical and mechanical equipment, and we appreciate all he does for us and the rest of the staff as well.
Treasurer Tax. Treasurer Tax.
Hi, so I'd like to recognize Erica Gutierrez. She's an accountant in our Treasury Division and is a great resource, both in our office and for other county departments. So thank you again for all your hard work.
Next, we have Admin again.
I think it would have been all right if she introduced herself, but Pam Samick, five years of service, is a Human Resources Director.
I'm going to, before I turn it over to the board for their comments, I just want to thank Cherish, who puts all of this together and hounds everybody for their pictures and does just an amazing job doing this. Thank you for helping to celebrate our employees, Cherish. And to close, I'll turn it back to the board.
So I think before we all speak, I'm going to make the motion to get up and give you the standing ovation you deserve. You are serving the public. We are in the spotlight and make these decisions that eventually impact you, but you're the ones making impact on the lives of the people that we serve here in Lake County. Thank you for your dedication. Five years, you learn the process. You understand Lake County. You're able to flow through the process every single day. 35 years, holy smokes. We're going to have to create a new five-year category just for you. Your dedication and your loyalty to serving the people that are your neighbors, your friends, your family is amazing. It's outstanding. Thank you so much. Any other comments before everybody leaves?
Well, just to Pam, Department head years, we measure like dog years. So I believe Pam is actually 35 years of service today and I thank her for that.
And I do want to acknowledge how much we have to pivot during our emergencies. It's not just nine to five. It's not just being in the office and doing work or doing field work. It is so much more. And so thank you so much for always being there for the needs of our community. Let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break.